Folks, please join me in pledging.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America. It's due to the republic for its citizens, domination of your god. And then this. Liberty, justice, law. Which is a long time.
So, all right, hello, everyone. This is the November twenty eighth. Meeting the Town and County Department of Planning Board. Uh, let me introduce the folks at the dais. Our recording secretary, Serene Hatch. Our remote facilities coordinator and also chaired person on the E C V, Kim Burford. And going down the front table here, we got Tim Schneider. Holding the planning board member, Mark Tolbert, planning board member, Scott Neal, planning board member. Amanda Ben-Laken, and it would make member and Bob, of course, planning board member. I'm Chuck Euler. I'm the chairman of the board. Also have staff representing M R B, Lance Bravam, and our town attorney and planning board attorney, Chris. Oh, and remotely. We have our. What is your title now, Sarah? Development? Town planners? Okay. Don't give me title, give me money, I know. All right, we also have Sarah join us. Thank you for sitting in. Okay, that covers everyone here. Uh, we're gonna follow the agenda as published. And. If you want to speak to the board regarding an issue. Uh, if you're an applicant, please come to the podium, get us your name and address. Uh, make your presentation. Uh, the board will then deliberate. On your application. I will open it up to anyone in the audience. Here or there. And see if anybody has any comments. If everything is under. Control and. Everything. Allows us to vote tonight, we will. I will take action. Right with the review of the application. And I think that pretty well covers protocol. We have two exits left and right. We have to leave the room. Please note where they are. Tonight, we have a couple of public hearings. Uh, they have been duly advertised. In the Daily Messenger on the November twenty first. It's one, not a four. And so they've been advertised for the three hearings. Uh, we have before us. And I will now open the floor up to pervert to the floor. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the board regarding anything that's on, it's not on the agenda. Now's the time to do so. Otherwise, I'll assume that everybody else is here to either hear or. Uh, respond to an item on the agenda. Not hearing anyone, let's move on. Uh, the first item of business is a continued site plan. Submitted by Logan Rockcastle, representing Marx Engineering, who was representing Roger Leighton. Fifty-nine ninety-three County Route, County Route thirty-two. Uh, the one's property. In that, on that same lot. Uh, Mr. Leighton is requesting a site plan approval. Construction of a new single-family residence driveway waste treatment plant. Yeah, as well as asking for a amendment to his special use permit. Allow for a construction business on the same property. And he is. Requesting a waiver. From a provision of our code. That states that. You cannot have a house and a business. On the same property in the. D R three. So, um.
Yeah, I just. Uh, want to pause you before going further. We were notified by the town that this lady was postponing.
That's what I was gonna get to, yes. Apparently, we had asked. The applicant to provide some information. At the last meeting, as well as the need to advertise. Because a special use permit does require. Advertisement of public notice. And uh, that public notice. Was never put out there. So it didn't get done. And I think there are a couple of things. Uh, that we were looking for from the applicant, including any waiver request, formal waiver request.
Yeah, we were just notified yesterday of what the town was looking for from us.
Okay.
But yeah, uh, believe we have to provide to get there.
So it looks like what we're looking at here is a continuation. Uh, again. Uh. And I think, can you get this information we requested into us by Friday? Yeah, okay. Uh, if you do that, then we, I think we can. Uh, take up your application and hopefully resolve it. At our December fourth meeting. Uh, is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Yes.
No kind of to the public. Hearing. Or you want that?
It will be.
Okay. So. I. Motion as presented by. Mr. Bravam, the, in the form of a continuation. Uh, and let's talk. Both of the same.
I'll make a motion to continue C P N. Dash twenty-three dash zero eight eight. Until the December twelfth meeting.
I will second.
Okay, motion second, next for the discussion. You understand, sir? What we're looking for and okay. So we'll, we'll see you on the twelfth with that. Hold the favor.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Any eyes? All right, moving on to our next agenda item again. Logan Rockcastle.
We blew past, uh, the blue sky one.
Yeah. Give it.
Blue sky.
Oh, you wanna do that now?
It's first on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at an old agenda and I just stuck it at the back.
On mine?
No, no. We can certainly. Who ahead? Would you please, uh, board members pull out a? Application. Or a resolution pertaining to, uh. The new sky?
Should be the first one.
Now. Yep.
And it was one we discussed. Last meeting.
Okay, why don't you give us a background?
Um, it's, one, we discussed the conditions of approval relating to renewal. Especially use permit requirement in code says it has to be renewed every two years. Contrary to other places in town code and quite frankly, the board's policy. Uh, after we had, after you passed the resolution. Uh, Jared Lust from Nixon's Hebody contacted me and said, hey, that's, that's gonna pose some problems for financing. Um, can we change it? And he submitted a letter to this board. Saying I would suggest these changes. The board and I discussed it at our last meeting and we came to a conclusion that. Pretty much those changes will be fine. Uh, Lance has a proposed resolution for you showing the changes that. You directed me to make. Um, and then the applicant actually just. Uh, contacted me and said, can we add the number five? Uh, and to the applicant at its last known address, which I don't see any reason we shouldn't do that as well. Um, I think this will solve the. Uh, will. Cover the town quite well, actually, quite frankly, even better, because this way the. Development office and the town clerk will calendar for every two years and if someone goes, guy doesn't walk in. With the documentation, then we send a notice and. Go from there. Like it makes sense. It seems to be what. You guys were all comfortable with, uh, at our meetings.
Okay, so it pertains to inspections and the.
Sure, renewal of the, uh. Instruction, maintenance, and removal. Uh, it also. Means it also includes, uh, it'll be increased by ten percent every five years. The surety, which it will cover. Inflation to the extent necessary.
Okay, and M R B determines our grease, reviews the surety.
Yes, and then as part of my review and approval of the surety, I'll approve the. Number five says I'll approve the amount. Uh, in consultation with the town engineer. And the applicant's engineer will submit, uh, M R B. An estimate and M R B, if it's acceptable. Will tell me to approve it or it's a need, you know, number, and Lance can deal with that. Applicant's engineer, there's changes.
Okay, so the board understand what the changes are?
Yes.
Is the board in agreement with the changes?
Yes, it's confirmed, Lance. It's four, five, and six.
You know, you're changing the order towards just four, and cross it off the original and put a new one. And then, and five, I crossed off the old one, but the new one. The addition to five as referenced by Chris was at the very end, the last sentence. After Tana Sessers office, comma, and to the applicant and its last known address. I believe six is as written as it was previously approved.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it if you can hear me.
Sure, Mr. Lust, good evening. Uh. Okay, so I think we're ready to. Move. Someone wanna give me a motion on this event?
I'll make the motion check for C P N twenty-three dash zero sixty-one, four, four, three, zero, dual rule. For the amended special use permit. Containing eight conditions. I'll second.
Motion second for the discussion. If not, hold the favor.
Aye.
Vote. Vote in carry.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays, everyone.
Get, get a good one. It's all service to Cheshire.
We're trying.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Okay, let's, if my agenda is correct. I now have. C P N oh ninety-three, through to everybody else, it's Logan Blackcastle. Marx Engineering, representing, um, Richard Snip. Uh, it's on County, yeah, but it's regarding a property of Airport Road. Appropriate for the site plan approval for new landscaping contract. Facility in the industrial zoning. Hello again.
Hi, guys. Um, yeah, so just to give a.
Your name again, I'm sorry.
Uh, John Billingsmark.
John, John, right. We usually see you on the line.
Yeah, not tonight.
Okay, John. Uh, four is yours.
So just to give a quick, um. Summary of what the site is, it's a landscaping, own supply facility, um. There should be three main buildings. Uh, two access, access points off Airport Road. Um, parking facility, storm water, uh. Management area in the rear. Uh, we stored gravel. Uh, pad area. Uh, and then a nursery, um, stock area. So at the last. Meeting, the board raised some questions, uh, they had about certain aspects, um, of the site. Uh, I'll just. Run right down through them, um, briefly, um, talking about and mentioning. Um. So the first one was landscaping, um, along the. For traffic. Um. On the western side looking towards the building. Um, provided updated landscaping plans. With screening on the.
Kim, could you roll the? Land sequence, just a large file, it's, it's for. I know, I, every time I went to bring it up, it crashed. So I haven't seen the landscape.
I did see it, it was, I brought that up, it was really good. Like the.
Yeah, we had extensive screen across that whole. Um, western side there.
Nope.
One more sheet.
Well, make it. Right there, okay. All right. Yeah, we were talking about either in that configuration or parallel with the drive, but that's certainly a nice one. Along the street. Okay, landscaping was good. That's actually, yeah.
Um, the other one. I had, uh, it was brought up last time was security for the site. Um, there will be two security gates at the access. At the driveways. Um, there will not be security fencing around the nursery, um, area. Um, and the plans have been updated for that. The other one. Um, the nursery itself, we got some further information from that again. Um. The plantings there are just gonna be seasonal temporarily, uh, held there. Um, plants will be brought in, in the spring and then. Um, as they're needed for various projects throughout the summer, fall, over the years. As needed, um, so there will be a small amount fertilizer applied. To the plants that are there, um, but they won't be year round. Uh, that at least anticipating won't be year round. Um, planting there. Um, so the other one. We talked about is parking. Um, so with our revised material we provided, uh, we updated the statement of operations. Uh, for the number of employees that they anticipate. Uh, at the site. Uh, to be approximately sixty employees. So we provided fifty-three, um. Parking spots. Uh, for the employees and then the long, longer dash lines in the middle there are for. Um. Stock or, uh, for, uh, fleet vehicles for the, for the company. Um, and they'll just be stored there when not in use.
So yeah, that would be seasonal, I guess, the sixty employees, that's the max.
That would be the max, yeah.
Uh, what do they anticipate during the off season? Well, I guess they do plow, right?
They do plow, yes.
No, you still have. Okay.
I think that. I remember right from this, from the statement of operations and what they said, I think. They said during the winter, there'd be fifteen, around fifteen full-time employees.
Okay.
Now, now for the record, John. Uh, I believe there was a letter that said that. Our code required five handicap spots, but you submitted a letter. Stating that the public is not coming in here, therefore it's just private. And that you are only gonna provide those three.
Yeah, so we, we, we're just, um. Yeah, it's not gonna be a public retail area, so we feel that the three handicap start. Spots are, you know, funny for what they're anticipating for.
One thing that's part of the record, but we didn't say it was five. Just that, so that does not meet our code, this parking plan, or it does meet our?
It does not meet go for a number of any required hand spaces.
But the. Number of spaces overall, it does meet the bonus.
Well, that, that's sort of our discretion.
Yeah, but.
How we feel their uses and, you don't wanna have too many spaces, but we certainly have this.
And then just the last final one, I believe, um, someone mentioned something about that dumpster, um. Area, we've included that, uh, um, in the. Site plans, um, so let's. Anybody on the board that's. Uh, any other points they wanna bring up or questions, so.
Your surface under the salt pile. Is that? Or that's right, the surface under the, your salt storage pile is there?
Yeah.
Uh, is, is that impervious?
Yeah, it'll be impervious, most likely, uh, concrete, uh.
Some sort of concrete, I'm assuming. I, I know, I had concern, I still feel a little bit about. They run off from the salt pile, you said, I think you said it's gonna be covered, maybe?
Yeah, it'll be covered.
Okay, so less chance of rain getting. Onto it and. You know, the salt having brine. Run off, off, and then I guess the other thing would be the. Uh, compost pile, the mulch pile. Since Flores, that's why I know the E C B had the same concerns. Uh, any leachate runoff from these. Office pile. Is that controlled in any way? Uh, again, is it a impervious surface? That has the, uh. The bulk.
Um, yeah, it'll be an impervious surface, uh, most likely gravel, um, but that whole area. I, and we, um. Lance and M R B brought up, um. Uh, concerns with the, with the runoff from the, from that, and we provided. Um, updated stormwater plans to. To, uh. To comply with that, but there's, we've been finding.
Or quantity. Quality.
Quality provided as well, yep.
Are you running this into any type of filtration system?
Yeah, so the rear, uh. The whole rear portion where the salt bunkers and the gravel pad, that all runs into. A bio retention facility in the south, which is a. Uh, sand filter type, um. Facility, uh, that will help to filter that runoff before, I guess, just start discharging to the main stormwater facility. Uh, it's kinda hard to see on this plan, but.
Which page she wants?
Uh, just go to the grain plan.
It's what?
The grain plan, right?
Yeah, while she's doing that, um, your answer to the M R B letter was pretty. Precise, it seemed like, except for number. Ten. Where M R B talked about the floor drains, you said you're gonna have them and. If though a grid separator is to be provided. And your answer was, if necessary. It'll be coordinated, so.
Yeah, uh, to be honest with you there, I'm not. Really even sure what a grid separator is. We're providing an oil-water separator, um, so, uh, I, I don't. That's all they required.
Yeah, that's, that was.
Okay, so that's good, so, so M R B, then. When you said if necessary, like, you said it had to be, then?
Well, typically based on the town's criteria, so, uh, at the end of the day, if there was an option to not have one. It'd be, uh, the supervisors or super generals. The blast. M R B.
So Johnny, you want to show us the, uh. Blue characteristics coming off that. Old stop so far, how it gets to the basin.
Yeah, so anything, um. Basically, anything from here. It's gonna flow this way towards this fire retention facility. Uh, and then this is the main pond here, so. Filters here and flows. Into the main wet pond area.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think some of the concern being that it's a landscape in the nursery area is identified in M R B letter was that. D C quantifies this or calls it as being a hotspot, like a gas station. You know, runoff hits the ground that's loaded, it can't go directly to an infiltration. Facilities is then gonna contaminate that infiltration, so. Uh, as part of the revised plan and the process, starting to come up with a mechanism, I have not seen the plan to revise that, so I apologize for that. Um, but they would be obligated to treat it differently than being allowed it to shoot flow directly into infiltrations. These mechanisms and measures that are available to D C guidance, that that's a lot for that. Those will have to be incorporated.
Okay. Hmm. Board okay with that?
Is that a current condition, Lance, or is that a?
So that's, yeah, in order for them to be able to get some approval of the, the SWP. And the chief, and a, and a lie, and also a ten, forward it to D C, it has to have town signature on it, our approval. So that is a condition, M R B letter is the condition.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Jim Butcher, I've got a chance to look at the phone at, at the latest meetings. Uh, I guess his concern was about the. Integrity of Airport Road, uh, you have two laterals, south through two laterals. Going across it, so he wanted to make sure, hopefully you're aware, John, that, uh, that has to be drilled. Uh, under the roads.
Um. Yeah, we haven't gotten that far, uh, we haven't heard anything from County Surgeon yet.
You're here first. Uh, Jim's gonna require that before you get a public.
Okay.
And that's standard, Jim. He's not gonna allow cutting of the roof unless it really ultimately has to happen. For circumstances, so. Plan should just reflect that it will be drilled unless otherwise. Provided.
Then you'll need permits in the sewer district. All right, obviously. And then, uh, we've got a lead. You're all. Anything else, board? Uh, the M R I features. This, you have the, uh, wetlands to the. The south, is it?
There is a wetland, yeah, it's, it's. It's, um. We have an aerial, but it's, it's, um. An off part, yeah, it gets to the south. Southwest, that would be.
Uh, the committee, uh, didn't feel there was any loss of ag land. This was all this application. M R B. Uh, we talked about sidewalk easement, uh. You covered that incident.
Uh, I had that, no, I don't know if I had that.
Uh, you talked about.
We don't believe I had that.
Fifteen foot sidewalk easement, one, one inch of width. Uh, again, the E C B was concerned about preserving. As many trees, I guess, most of the foliage is. Again, down in that. Southern.
Well. Yeah, the only trees are right on, on the southern property line, there's a tree line there.
Avoid the wetland. Uh. Obviously, uh. In a landscape business, you should know. What native species to use. When you're landscaping. This is a. Company, this is Lakeview, now we're doing, formerly you're now doing businesses at Lakeview. And is the name of the company? Believe, I saw that somewhere.
I'm not totally sure.
Oh, really?
Not sure.
I saw that.
Yeah, you saw that, okay. Where are they located now?
Another side of the lake. Um, I forget what program, uh, tucked away a little bit.
Okay, just go on this side. Uh. Okay, all open up to anybody in the audience, like to address the board regarding its application? Yeah, if not, the. Board, do you have any other questions of the applicants, or are we ready to move? Hey, we're ready to move, uh, we've got a. Unlisted secret.
Step, step.
So, uh. Let's handle them separately. Let's talk secret first.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion, um, to approve the secret. Um, determination of non-significance. For C P N twenty-three dash zero nine three. At, um, Airport Road. In the I. Zone.
I'll slide. I guess, uh, I have a second.
I second.
Uh, I guess related to seeker is, uh. Lance, will you give me the ship? Chip, oh, uh. Letter from the applicant.
Uh, it's true.
I thought they supplied it.
I believe we.
Oh, did you? Okay. Didn't see in the file. All right, it's done. All right, let's, I can seek her, uh, for discussion, if not, hold the favor.
Aye.
Close. Okay, let's move on to, uh, site plan. Oh, it's gone.
I can do site plan too, um, I'll make a motion. To approve the site plan at twenty-three zero nine three on Airport Road. Um, with, let me turn this page.
I have.
Ten plus one.
Plus two.
Plus two.
So eleven is adding the, the language that the revised plan should be revised to identify fifteen foot wide. Sidewalk easement to the town of Kandigwa, standing along, or running along Airport Road, studying from property land, how to franchise. Property land to property. And then twelve is that all easements. And mapping are to be provided to the town attorney and M R B, so we're good.
Sounds good.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, for the discussion? If not, hold the favor.
Aye.
Notice, okay, motion carries. All right, that takes care of, Mr. Snip. All right, we're gonna move on to some, uh, old hearings, I got. You just want the white sheet, yes. All of my, my whole business. Let's move on to, uh, C P N twenty-three O E. Wait. Uh, Anthony Venetia, representing Dave Emery. My property out on Michigan Road. Specifically nineteen fifty. He's requesting to subdivide ten acres he owns for a future home site. From a fifty-nine acre parcel. Uh, variance was required from the D B A. Mr. Emery was successful getting it. Uh, thanks. So I think we're ready to move to the subdivision. Anthony, how are you?
Good, how are you? So, uh, what we have today is, uh, the, uh, two lot minor subdivision, we're cutting ten acres off of the fifty-nine acre piece. The piece is a little bit larger than the fifty-nine acres, but the fifty-nine acres, Kandigwa and the other is investment field. Um, on the west side of the portion, portion of the properties. Uh, what we're focusing is on the ten acres in the southeast forest, uh, is for a future house site, um, it'll need septic and all that, uh, there's. Not a lot of public utilities out there right now. The reason for the long, you know, about a property was to get to that ten acres, have enough frontage for, to not really have any other variances other than that length. Issue that we ran into. The goal is to kinda get the house back. Just far enough from that, there's the, there's like a depression that comes down and comes back up, that's kinda where the house will be situated. We wanted to keep the. We wanted to keep the pond on the larger parcel, so that's kind of how we got that on. Be a long narrow piece, uh, the ten acres was the, the, the sweet spot in the acres that was needed, could be kind of used for. Anything down the road that would never pop up, whether it's uses a farm that or anything like that, so, I mean, pretty simple. There are some NRI district, um, fortunate to the southernly part, but there's nothing right around the house or ten acres. That um, kind of pops up in those areas.
Board, any comments?
It's not farming now, it's not ang land now.
I, I believe.
It is, yeah. It is, yeah. Look pretty like a field. And there, I, I heard on the zone where he's gonna. Are you gonna farm it also, I heard?
Am I gonna?
Are you gonna farm it also?
Well, I, right now it's been up, I mean, I'm transitioning everything from Victor and yes, I'm. I'm planning on having that here pass.
Yeah.
Not a real level field.
Right.
You gotta see that from the. Uh, they said it would mean some farm land would be taken away, but it wasn't active farming and they realized it was a. Family transfer property and in the interest of preserving family ownership of farms. Uh, the county planning board had no comments. ECB, uh, I don't, you didn't have any comments if I recall, the meeting last week, or a couple weeks ago. Uh, you mentioned the NRI feature, the wetlands and the woodlands. And. Again, I guess the uh, part one of the seeker. Navy player.
It will at the time of site plan review, so prior to disturbance of the site. So typically, when we've had that type of application, the same application, that would be a condition of that site, because this is a subdivision of land. There is, there is a study to do this thing now, or any of us.
Uh, since public hearing, anyone in the audience want to address the board regarding this application? If not, I will close the hearing and let's move on to again an unlisted action under seeker. You have all the. Spoiler plate in front of you. Well, give me a motion for seeker first.
I'll make the seeker motion for CPN twenty-three zero eight zero. For nineteen fifty to Michigan Road.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion second for discussion, if not, all favor.
Hi.
Post. Size habit, motion carries. Let's do something.
I'll also make the motion for the subdivision of CPN twenty-three zero eight zero. Let's say it's subdivision uh, table for. Subdivision of fifty-nine point six five acres, uh, yielding one lot of forty-nine point six five seven. And one eight, one lot of ten acres.
I'll second.
Okay.
Three conditions, Mark.
Any three conditions.
Yeah, three conditions, they're the standard conditions.
Okay. For discussion, if not, all favor. On seventh, motion carries, okay folks. Painless. Alright, next hearing. Each one of you now open is CPN twenty-three oh eighty-seven. Night, folks. Representing Luke Nagel, Carluzo, DNC Enterprises. On North Main Street here in Canadega, our property fifty-two hundred Foster Road. Question a subdivision of thirteen point seven nine acres into five lots. But four lot, lots four and five having access to Foster Road, lots one and three on a private drive. Uh, needed a variance which you got last week. So we're talking again some. You got it.
Yes, all right, so what we have is a, is a five lot subdivision, the head's come in front of the board before, about a year ago, it's for three lot subdivision. The two lots already subdivided were flanking the properties on the east and on the west. So what we've decided to go through with the process of, we did a lot of iterations on how to develop this property and kind of inform with it. Anywhere from town road to cul-de-sac to a private drive, we kind of landed on the private drive with the three lots in the back. It lends more to developing those three lots if someone really want to instead of trying to, you know, cram. Seven more houses, so we came up with a three lot, um, private drive. So all the lots here will have public water, sewer, gas and everything is at the road. So the three lots in the back will have future, um, those will be site plans when we, you know, get to that portion of it. They'll all be accessed through that, that. That neck there, there's enough room to put the water, so I can all get my access, so buildings that need to get there, so. So we did need a variance for lot one because it was a little bit longer than five, it's only about two or three. This is kind of just showing you where houses could be, I'm trying to keep them in there. The two houses on either side, lot two and lot three, that area is more in. Kind of like a dying ash area, so some of those trees will need to be cleared. Lot one kind of steps into that hardwood and we kind of want to leave enough area for that so someone could come in. You know, kind of manicure the trees and figure out exactly where they want to put their house and kind of keep that over there as well. And then, as you go north across that other belly that's in the back, it just kind of opens up to, you know, beautiful woods, so. So we want to kind of keep that all in one spot, and then it does go down to the gully. There are steep slopes in the gully, but we're kind of, any kind of construction that we'll be doing will stay away from those, so.
Okay, uh, you took the barn down.
Barn down, yeah.
Barn's down. Uh, I guess when you were looking at the lots either side of the lots three and four. Uh, I think your dad said he's gonna go in and he's gonna clear some of the, the brush that was not very attractive. Which he did.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Actually.
We went through, we just kind of got some of the, the undergrowth down, it was kind of bad.
Well, I think, I think our concern was, as it is with this subdivision is, if there are some trees that we could keep. Uh, that we get a chance to look at and be broken down, so. I think the same, the same rules would apply for these lots, and I, I assume we're looking at site plans. For these eventually, right?
Yes.
So that, that could be part of the site plan that would give you. Well, more focused, look at the wood trees on each lot as the site plan comes in, so. That, uh, covers that issue.
Yeah, lot four and lot five, the ones that can grow, they're just on the other side of that kind of scrubby, high-y um. Uh, heads roll there, most of those two over kind of exactly where that barn was, there's really not much. Tree cover there, the only real tree sites that would be anything significant is pretty much lot one, lot three. Lot two could have a couple, but we could definitely. Down the road when that comes, we could call out some of those larger trees that might be affected where the, the areas of the house.
I walked back toward gene trail back there.
Yeah.
That's a, it's a good deer habitat there. We're moving on across to the uh, the cornfield cross street.
They got all that habitat, those two large pieces.
Yeah, moving back. Uh, any other board members?
I just have questions on the private road. On how it's gonna get managed on lot three that owns it.
So, so.
No, that's just.
So there is, there will be a private, private driveway management agreement, it's similar to, I'll just say, Lakebury's Way. My house that I'm on, I own it, and now we have a management agreement on it, so the four lots of that, that access off it. Everybody splits it evenly, that's how it's written, so maintenance, snow plowing. All that stuff is, is all taken care of, everybody, you know, it's, it's something that's a legal binding contract, when they buy the lot, they're buying into it, so. That kind of, you know, it forces everybody to really get together and, and take care of it, so usually it's split. You know, in this case, it'd be thirty-three percent.
In, in. It's something I'm glad you asked, because it's something I concern, I'm concerned about always, but in, I guess in. From practical fact, it's really like there's a road there, lot three's property line goes all the way to the red, but. It'll, it'll just look like their lot stops where that dashed line is. Well, uh, above one seven nine point two two on the site plant or subdivision map. And then the road is common, but lot three owner might own the road, but can't do anything on it, can't put a shed there, can't put their green swings up there. Um, can't, you know, block it, charge tolls, uh, whatever, and then. One of the conditions of Lance and I just added, the shared uh, maintenance agreement and cross access season, so. It's a little complicated, but.
Uh, how is it fighting the tolls to? Are those three lots back there, or are they gonna have to be pumped out to Foster or?
They will be pumped out to Foster, we have a plan to bring a manhole and extend the line to the left, across under the road. Where it's really pumped in. That's not on this plan, that's on, that's the future.
But I mean, in practicality, it's gonna require gas line.
Yeah.
Airline, water lines.
I guess the cross, so cross access easement including utilities.
Yeah.
Did you think about using lot one owning that area? That have direct access to the road and then. And then in the math, it looked like lot three would have enough square footage.
It really was, they all have the same, I mean, they all have the square footage they would need, it just needs one of them to have it.
You should know, you're living it.
It honestly, everybody that I live with up, up on there, and I, I own the road, I have this part of mine, I own that weird little neck and. And everybody takes care of it, and I, I just, I go from sixty feet to the larger piece and everybody's part of the. The um, maintenance agreement, they all knew about it when they, when they built.
Shockingly, there's complaining about these, and these are all over town and all over the state. There's a lot of people complain about them, oh, so and so doesn't pay his fair share, oh, I always have to. You know, ask him twice or he won't pay at all. I don't have, not a ton of litigation and not a ton of uh. Actual problems in, in our town, most of the last ten years we've required, you know, recorded agreements saying you're gonna chip in.
Yeah, I think with your, I don't know where you are, I think there's some issues with utilities, sort of, get gas in.
Yeah, there's utility easements and all that there, so that was all part of it.
Apparently they didn't. Didn't function well, or they, okay, I, I just knew that there were two properties, the left and the right that.
That was a timing issue, not a functioning issue.
It wasn't a.
Timing issue.
Okay, easement issue or not access.
Nope, there was never access, it was more of timing than.
Sarah, I, I just want to confirm, uh, we're looking at a minor subdivision here, we're considering it's a minor subdivision. Which allows the applicant to uh, use a private road for the three lots. Uh, I know there was an interpretation at one time. That any subdivision of more than three lots, whether they all be on the private road or not. Be considered a major subdivision, but here we're looking at two lots and a foster of three lots off the private drive, so that would be considered a. Minor subdivision, right?
Hey Sarah.
Either closer to the mic or you're breaking up on us.
Can you hear me now?
No, no.
No.
Do you want to call my phone, my cell phone, I'll put you on speaker?
Okay, well, she's calling in, uh. County planning board had no comments on this application, there's a letter from MRB.
Not her.
MRB had their letters of twentieth. Butcher City had no comments, currently, we will site plans come through. Uh, the county sewer district, obviously, we're in Phoenix Sewer Central Department. Uh, we talked about the back lots will be served with a. A lip station. Our CEO could work and had no comments. Okay. Sarah, did you get, did you hear my question?
Yes. Um, so. A part of the code that applies here is the piece that was changed earlier this year, um, in chapter one seventy-four. Dash nineteen subdivision of land lot size and arrangement. Um, section I was changed to read subdivision of land resulting in the creation of four or more parcels along a right of way. Shall constitute a major subdivision and shall only be authorized with improvements to create public right of way pursuant to site design and development criteria. But the important part there is that it's four or more parcels along a right of way, and this one is only three parcels along that private. Right of way, and the other two parcels are out on Foster Road. So there was a lot of back and forth, but because it's the three parcels along that right of way. It, and I, and I know that's why they decided to have those two parcels out front, not have their driveways on that private roadway. Um, this plan went through a few different iterations.
Yeah, yeah, I remember there was a lot of back and forth, and, and that certainly makes sense, I think we agreed that. The lots that are being counted should be the lots that are on the private right of way, not the lots of the so, total lots of subdivision, which would be five.
Right, so there, there's, there are two separate right of ways for these five lots. The two that are out on Foster Road and the three that are on along that private, proposed private driveway.
Very good, okay.
I was actually just thinking, but maybe a note should be added to the plan, lots four and five. Shall not uh, have access to the private driveway.
It is will be in the agreement.
Theoretically. Same, so that we're not in violation, I mean, you're planning on it, theoretically could have those lots come off that private driveway.
Yeah. Still not to access the public foster.
Okay, uh, board, if any other question, let me go out to the public, anybody have any concerns, questions, comments? Sir, you got the floor.
I'm Mark Brown. Uh, I'm the western boundary of this project. Um, I have a couple of concerns. My property is along here, this is a, um. The collects runoff from my western neighbors. And then when it overflows in the spring, the rains, it flows down into this area. It's quite damp. My concern and question is, how is that gonna be handled? These have been this subdivision. My subject or my, um, some homes also come out of the house since about a year. And also make the way down this. So in the spring, it's quite damp.
Is that, is that a low area back to just leave it in there, or is it eventually drain across the lot?
Quite frankly, there's so much brush, I've never gone in there. My son used to play lacrosse and would pitch the balls in there and send our Springer in to get him. Was successful most of the time, but it is quite thick brush right now.
So it drains there, but whether it stays.
Where it goes, I don't know, because it is. It is quite flat. You come around, uh, and about this point across, this is all very flat. And we have the, with the, it's different to those, you know, those.
Well, again, tonight we're discussing a subdivision of the big lot into five lots. The applicant will have to come in to this board with each lot as far as the, it goes to the site plan for the home. So it takes, you get into a lot more detail at that point, and I, I would think one lot three. That's lot three, yeah, uh, if there is a concern about runoff coming off the property, that, that we make sure we want to control that. And get it around the house and out to the street.
But if there's a drainage issue, water has to handle.
Yeah.
Isn't now the time to address how it gets down to this zone? Because that's where the water goes ultimately.
Yeah. Well, again, with this application, there'll be no construction. Plan currently. It's uh, again, when they come in with the site plans, we would see the detailed drawings as to where the lot, the houses will be located. The drainage will be associated with it, and we would look at each lot on an individual basis. It's certainly good to know that that's an issue, but how we correct it at this point, I I think it might be premature.
Just as a theory.
Yeah.
These two get developed. And the owners say, no, you can't come across it. With water lines or drainage or whatever, that would create a problem with that three. Now is the time, my mind, to recognize that and deal with it.
Okay, well, I guess, yeah, that's a good question, what if they sell the lots off, one uh, one, two, and three? And the owners of lot two are the first ones to come in and say, I'm gonna build, I'm ready to go. And he builds his house, and then lot three comes along and. Try to know where to go, uh, unless we put some sort of rage. Uh, good question.
Well, that's sort of the distinction in the minor and the major subdivision, major one's gonna be. That's drainage, just sort of subdivision issue.
Well, you have storm drainage in the street, too, now. Well, it doesn't, it can't get out of Foster. Oh, no. That's slower in the back.
Maybe you wanna ask Anthony if he has any thoughts on that.
Anthony, have you given any thoughts to?
Are you gonna? Uh, we have looked at a couple options for stormwater management, some of the houses, because of where they are, they will have individual stormwater management systems, whether it's a rain guard or dry well. So that'll take some of the runoff concerns, um, we could easily put some, um, a drainage. Access easement. Included in here, and and maybe a fifteen or twenty foot wide there along here to get to this. Area here where the water all ultimately goes, so if someone does have water issues, they're gonna shed here, they're gonna shed back. This sheds across, we can manage the water to come across here, maybe there's a, or there's something, but we can bring in drainage. And then put a small drainage there, that will be for lot three. So that it wouldn't, you know, they couldn't block it off.
So drainage is gonna cross lot one to get from the private drive to.
Extending far enough to, to go, to get to where it enters off. What we live in, most of this is, more than likely, we see this, this grade, when he's talking about it, does overflow, shit's coming through here. That's maybe this way, through here, so this will probably raise up a couple of feet, water can get around here, and then maybe some sort of. System, I mean, give you some, put an easement along this line, tend to the other side. So that way, this is also included.
One of the conditions that I I've suggested the board to consider is that. As part of an approval of either lot one, lot two, or lot three, whatever comes first. Then the entire roadway is gonna have to be constructed with that lot, so. To that point, where I'm going with that is that the drainage, the grading, which we don't know yet until we have a design plan that shows. How the road's gonna get, but then, what the grading, the topography's gonna look like, where there's gonna be swell, where there's not gonna be swell. Um, can be settled, in my opinion, at that point in time.
Yeah, we've been looking, we have been looking at it, like, uh, coming in with just the plan to construct the road. And the utilities to stuff them out, so we have been talking, uh, we're working with engineers. Come up with that plan, and then also different homeowners, so more than likely, what you're gonna see is the first thing you'll see, or the next phase. Would be the driveway with the utilities, and then the stuff out, so we can handle the power, we can handle gas, and we can handle water to sewer. So then, so.
What I, what I'm saying is that that first project that comes before us for any of the three that are in question. Would have more detail in the road, like, then I can determine what makes the most sense, so across.
Let's have a note, let me just focus, a note shall be added to the plan. That prior to, uh, that an overall stormwater management drainage plan. Shall be included as part of. Uh, or prior to granting site plan approval for lots three, four, one, two, or three, yeah. That way we don't back ourselves into a corner with your, said your, into the corner you're talking about. Then I got another question, is. The water is the runoff from that pond and from the street intended to go to that college, Anthony? From the, from Mr. Brown's lot?
It is, it just flowed across, it wasn't really this, I don't think, um, if there is overflow from the pond, it would just naturally run to the northeast. Um, a lot of the, I mean, there is, a lot of the, there's a culprit that is back east. It comes across and it falls down through here, that we've been, you know, part of our. The development of lot five and lot three are gonna have, and there's no, it's down there, in the middle of it. But a lot of that water, and you know, it comes down through here, it doesn't, it gets to here, it's gonna swell, this water comes across. It's kind of like that, but most of the water that comes in from that hill, that field, it's. Kinda sits here, and I'm talking to Jim about it, Jim likes that it's a smaller over, it holds the water back.
Yeah.
He's like, I asked him if we could make it bigger to get the water out of there, he's like, no, I wanna hold it back, so he doesn't wanna push it all there.
How often see a pond overflow? How often does it overflow?
Right now, it's two foot low. We haven't had much drainage fall.
We've walked back in, back in there, and water doesn't sit, because you know, those are one from the contour, so it's five foot across the building, I mean, it's, it moves.
Yeah, if you go back to it right now, I'm pretty sure if you go over the drive.
It's just like spring rains.
Spring rains.
Well, we certainly know how to block the flow of water, and now they obviously wanna control it, so we'll work towards doing that, I mean. Do you think the uh, the alternative that we mentioned, you would be? Yeah, I, I think we're looking at the whole area, not individual lots, so. Develop with any lot, the driveway and any, any infrastructure involved with, okay? Anything else?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, can we move this down? Lot number one, does this go by second? Um, there is no way to get to this part of the lot.
Think they want to, yeah.
And that's got the nicest woods on it as well.
Well, I would think as part of the development lot one, that knowing that it's heavily wooded. As part of our natural resource inventory, we would ensure that the, those trees would not be touched and. That's, you got some steep. Yeah. It wouldn't, uh, other than making enough room for a backyard on lot one, I I wouldn't see any reason.
My third concern is the treatment of the. Degree that are brought in since last May, uh, from the McDonald's parking lot rebuilt. There were numerous truckloads of asphalt, concrete. That were brought in, and what would be, uh, lot two, yes. Um, and as a reminder, a couple of weeks ago, I noticed that there were some new piles. And all afternoon today, they were running loads from, it looked like they were cleaning out a flood pond on Fox Ridge. And bringing it, bumping it on lot two.
I know our, uh, good force and officer was aware of it. Uh. Sir, do you wanna check to to see where Murph is regarding the dumping on on this lot?
We do have an active permit there to do that, and we did take some of the um. Breed from Fox Ridge Pond to there, because it's only the area that's close by that has an active. And we did talk to Jim when we were out there the other day, and I told him how far I was gonna put it, so. And then that will be, you know, as soon as we start messing around with the road and doing that in the spring, there's never a chance to, kinda. Decompose and turn it into dirt, and then we can spread it around and use this for some fill and things like that for the private driveway.
Okay, to raise it. Would you talk to Murph about it, or good fortune officer?
Yeah.
Uh, like her.
Yeah, no problem.
Yep. You got that, sir, thank you.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I fixed my microphone. Um, yeah, we can, we can double check with uh, Mike Murphy tomorrow.
Okay. Alrighty. Anybody else uh, just a word regarding questions, concerns, this application? If not, uh, board have any other? Concerns, I think I got my checklist taken care of. Nope, okay. Uh, we're looking at another uh, unlisted action because of the subdivision. Let's do the secret. Make a motion to approve secret resolution, unlisted action on C P N twenty-three dash zero eight-six at. Fifty-two hundred Foster Road in the R one-third district. Um. Yeah. Okay.
I'll second.
Motion second, motion by Bob, second by Scott, for discussions.
San Rosa by subdivision subdivision.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Okay, motion carried, let's move on to the subdivision. I too will take, make that motion on a single stage subdivision, lot approval resolution. C P N twenty-three dash zero eight-six fifty-two hundred Foster Road. Where we're going to subdivide into five lots. And with some new conditions now.
I have ten minutes for the board, so okay, I'd like to read the five through ten.
Yeah.
One through four are your standard ones. Uh, five, this is a little unique, just because of the fact that we're creating parcels that require easement in order for them to file. So five, uh, a notice to be added to the plan indicating that the private drive is required to be constructed in whole as part of the first site plan application. For either lots one, two, or three within the proposal. Uh, number six, the subdivision plan is to be revised to label the cross access easement over the private drive, which serves lots one through three. Number seven, the cross access easement in shared ma, uh, excuse me, cross access easement, including utilities. And shared maintenance agreement is to be prepared by the applicant and forwarded to the town attorney and town engineer for review. And approval prior to receiving signatures on the plan. And recorded. Prior to receiving a signature. Okay, um. Um, number eight, the cross access easement is to be filed with the county clerk's office within the subdivision plan. And to receive a filing provided to the town clerk. Number nine, note should be, is to be added to the plan, the subdivision plan. Uh, stating that lots four and five shall only have access off Foster Road. And are not to be allowed to connect to a proposed private drive. And then number ten is a notice to be added to the subdivision plan, that the, then an overall drainage plan. Is to be incorporated and designed as part of the first site plan application for either lot one, two, or three. Those are the. Those conditions?
I'll take you.
Okay. Motion second for discussions. In favor of the subdivision, say aye. Nice having, motion carries. Okay, very much, thank you. Alrighty, I will now open. I will now open a hearing for C P N twenty-three one-on-one. Uh, Ms. Driscoll from Sign and Lightning Services, Ontario in New York, representing Greg Moyer. Waitwater Parkway in Syracuse, owner of property at three two two five C three three sixty-four. And this is for the infamous Sierra Trading Post sign in the Roseland Plaza. We're looking at special use permit for a convert, commercial speech sign as required in the C C zoning. Uh, someone here, I'll open the hearing, anything representing uh, the applicant?
Hi, yes, this is Kelly Wagner with June Sign, representing Sierra.
Hello, Kelly.
Hi, good evening.
Uh, I guess, sort of, feet are completed, signs there, so it's, we've not heard to figure out what it's gonna look like. Uh. Is, is anything gonna be different than what's currently there, I think it's, it it's backlighted, right?
Uh, facelit.
A facelit, okay.
It's my understanding that we are, um, per the expediter, who's Melissa Driscoll from Sign and Lighting Services, that. We are reviewing the uh, three foot set of channel letters at this time for permit approval.
Uh, you're looking at the. Building mounted commercial sign that's four foot two inches by twenty-one eight nine three quarters inches. With a day night face, facelit, channel, letter, wall sign.
Yeah, I see, yes, that's, that's, that's the, that was the actual, um. Drawing that we were, uh, the sign that we were proposing for the variance approval. I spoke to Melissa today, and our understanding was that we were going to uh, be considered for the. Permit for the sign for the three foot set of channel letters, that is within code.
Uh, yeah, originally you were going to the Z B A, and that had been the. Not, not required anymore, and you're just before the planning board's proceeding, uh, regarding a. Uh, s- s- special use.
It's a special use permit, I think.
Okay, it's required, it's like. I'm sorry, do you understand that, Kelly, so you're, you don't have to go to the Z B A, you're pretty clear of them. And you're here in front of us tonight for a. Special use permit, which is required in the C C zoning district of our town, and. I'm, I'm assuming if the sign meets the code in terms of size and everything, uh. Are there any special concerns the board may have this evening regarding the sign?
No, I don't, the only question I have, she said it was three foot, and this is.
So at one point, there was another application with a bigger sign, believe. That I had first drafted up and scratched off, and then the belief, the determination, the latest and greatest determination. Other references the information that I have before you in my awareness. Which then goes forward and mentions that it doesn't need zoning, or excuse me, zoning board approved, based on that view. I, I'm pretty sure my dimensions measure, might meet and match the latest and greatest determination that was provided.
And the sign that's there.
Yes, and the sentence there. I'm not aware of a smaller sign, but I could have made a smaller sign, it's not me, just, other than that, I need the ones before you.
Sarah, we're good on the, the sign square footage?
Yeah, so there were a couple different versions, um. And then, uh, I, I think it was at P R C when we were talking about, like, that the sign needed a variance, so they said, well, they would do a smaller one. And then I believe the smaller one is the one that got installed, right?
Yes, that's correct, the three foot. Yes.
Yeah, so the sign's already in place, but you still had to come back to do the special use permit. To allow the sign that you already have, I know, I, and. Um, Kristen Smith, our zoning officer, I know was doing a lot of the conversations about this, so I, forgive me if I don't have all of the details, but, um. I, I, I think there was conversation at that P R C meeting that they may eventually. I, I, I think there was conversation at that PRC meeting that they may eventually want to come back and put a larger sign on, but right now, we just have to go through the procedures. To get the current sign approved, which includes this special use permit application. So I, yeah, I do realize there might be some confusion on the size of the signs. But that was my understanding is that the smaller sign is what's actually on the building now and that's what they're. Um, going through the special use permit for now. If they ever choose to do a larger sign, that would be a separate process at a separate meeting in the future with a different application.
Yes, that's exactly my understanding, Sarah, is what, yes.
Board's okay with the sign that's there, we just wanna make sure that what we're showing is the whereas. Yeah. Is the size that's there.
Sarah, I guess the question I have is, is what is the square footage of the sign that's currently up that's before the board?
Um. I don't actually know the details, I'm sorry, I was not as closely involved with this application as Kristen was, um. But I know that Kristen is very careful and I know there was a lot of back and forth. So I think what you have in front of you is correct.
Yeah, I, I think the board is comfortable with moving ahead. Saying is, well, the sign is there, we're okay with, we'll grant the special use permit. It's just that you'll have to get together with Kristen.
Yeah, I'll. What, what the numerical, the metrics?
All referenced, those pros, we have correct square footage.
Okay. Does that sound good to the board? Okay, so. Uh, so again, we have a, excuse me, anybody in the audience, uh?
Nope, the audience is small.
Okay, appears no one has any comments, so I will close the public hearing. And I will entertain. Uh, let's do, see, I will make a motion to uh, consider this a secret type-two resolution. Uh, which thereby states that this board has no other requirement to act, further review on the seeker. So uh, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries. That was the type two. Uh, let's move on to uh, what are your protocol, I guess we do the site plan first. Uh, kind of a motion on the site plan. Along with any conditions.
I'll make the motion to approve single-stage site plan. Uh, for CPN twenty-three dash one-on-one, special use permit approval, women's.
Send them a site plan first.
Yeah. Uh, first I can approval with the two conditions that are on there, second.
Okay, motion second, for discussion. Now, on favor? Okay, let's move on to the uh, SUP. Somebody wanna?
I'll move to uh, accept the special use permit. For twenty-three one-on-one with, what do we have?
I think the five standards we talked about just being compliant with the special use.
With five conditions, listen.
I'll second.
Hey, motion second. Uh, it's perpetual as long as the current or future owners use that sign. Okay, uh, for discussion on that, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
First. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Alright. Move down to uh, a new site plan. Parks engineering, representative Lisa Pope. Uh, lives down in Florida, but she has a property at forty-eighty County Route sixteen. Has seen a site plan approval to tear down and rebuild single-family residence. Variance was requested for a setback for retaining wall. And that variance was received uh, last Tuesday from the applicant. So we're here to talk site plan. John, I guess you. Earned your money, I.
Thank you, sir. Uh, yes, so. Um, they are. Tearing down existing uh, residents. Uh, there. And we uh, just build a new house, um. We were uh, at the zoning board last night for uh, variance for retaining metal and stuff, sorry. Uh, or uh, variance for the retaining wall for the driveway. Uh, as you can see right, this is the existing conditions uh, currently and right now, what she's doing is pulling into the, the driveway there, it's. Chated uh, great portion and then walking up uh, the stairs uh, to the residence. Uh, so what she is doing now is uh, having a drive-in uh, garage and basement, um, so if you go. Scroll down to the site plan. Uh, the new design is um, driveway comes around and then basement or garage on the basement floor. And then redoing the house. Uh, for the rest of it, and then um. The uh. Variances that we needed for the front retaining wall, uh, cause there's a um. Uh, those are two-foot contours, so it drops off pretty steep right there. Um, so we're, we're holding that back, um, and then the new house. Uh, we've, we've adjusted the new house to be within the. The whole house to be within the setbacks further, furthering it from what it is currently, which is right on, right, right on the property line. Utilities wa- utility-wise, she, she redoing uh, water and sewer connections. Stormwater management, ran some dry wells for the roof layers to connect them to. Um. Uh, I think that's all I got, I just hope you guys have any questions.
Okay, uh. Hopefully, so the ECB's comments on this application. Came this morning, and a number of concerns, uh. The uh, the trees you have up on the uh, northern property line. Uh, what happens uh? There's uh, three good-sized trees along. To the north of the house. Yeah, those are. Uh, being removed, uh. You scroll down to the site plan, please. Um, we might be able to save a couple of those, actually, uh. Where, where, where it's gone to dry well on that side and there's some grating down by the stairs, uh, but we may be able to adjust that, save some of those trees. As much as we can. I, I, I don't think we, we can accept many. And the other thing is, is the, the, the plan is woefully lacking any uh. Any landscaping design, I mean, certainly has to comply, I feel, with our shoreline guidelines requirements. Uh, being that there's not a landscape plan. Uh, I think there should be one, and I. Look, the board's ready to act unless the, you know, the shoreline guidelines are gonna be addressed.
Oh, what kind of? Yes.
What kind of um. Landscaping would you be looking for, because this is on the other side of Westlake Road, um. So.
Certainly visible, you know, like.
What, what type of landscaping would you?
It's not, it's not up to us to design it, I think we just. Again, board, uh, I'll be out here, right?
I, I think we would apply the same. Level of scrutiny of review and comparing it to the shoreline guidelines and does this meet the shoreline guideline requirements? Even if it's not directly on the lake, it still has. The lake view and the, and it can be seen from the lake, so there's the. Think we would be focusing on, I mean, as, as Chuck mentioned, you know, the, the mature trees as well, I agree with that, but for shoreline. Um. The. Softening, I guess, is the. The manner in which I would like to summarize.
Sure. Yeah, we can prepare our landscape plan and that's some plantings and.
Yeah, I, I sort of quite this property, was it Blazing? Blazing property, remember?
Yeah.
To the south, uh, sort of set up similar and they, they did a very nice uh. Uh, garden and landscape, uh, buffer out in front of the house. Here you have the wall, how high is that wall?
Ooh, um. Good question, I don't remember off the top of my head.
That'd be pretty tall.
Yeah. I think it's, you mean six, eight? Eighteen?
I will say, Don, in your benefit, though, there, there are two mature trees on the, on the lakeside.
Yeah, that's the other point I was gonna bring up, is there's trees on the, on the lakeside portion.
That does buffer that house. I don't know how you're gonna save those trees, I think they're all much.
This wasn't after a while back.
I think we get the first plan, the survey.
It says one.
Yep. Yeah.
Guessing a picture.
And watch.
That's you.
Twenty-four and twelve.
I think one was a sixteen, one was an eighteen, twenty-four.
Twenty? Yeah.
There's.
Yeah, yeah. The other question I had, John, to me, and I, and I read the neighbor's letter to uh. The south there.
Yeah.
Uh, and his concern, then I heard the zoning board's notes, now you said you're gonna swale that area there to make sure that water stays off of his property. Uh, and then I, I, I'm surprised nobody brought up the other property to the other side, cause that, that's even a steep investment drop-off there. How would you manage that runoff? Um, just off of those, the dry wells, cause that's really steep right there, so would that be foundation? You wanna make?
Yeah, so we, we are throwing, um, we're, the only. Grading going to. The neighbor, o- over here is just anything that's running off of this yard, anything coming off the house. If you were going to the, the part of uh, rear dry well, and this. Anything coming off the radiator spilling around into the last dry well. The only thing that's coming into the, into the neighbor's years is just cheese off of Saturday night, right?
Then all the downsides probably are going into that dry well?
Into the, yeah.
Being a fun.
Yeah.
How steep would your driveway be now? Would be flat or fairly flat?
Yeah, it'd be, uh, I think it's around two or three percent, the driveway is.
You, does your plan show a culvert? Cause I actually unearthed one down there the other day, there was one there. Almost clogged.
Yeah, it was all the clogged.
Yeah. I don't know what you can do with that, but it's, it's clogged right now. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it was, I don't know if it's usable. Yeah. I was surprised with one there, and it doesn't look like it's gonna go very far. Down. And that shed's gonna stay right where it's at? And I see it in the picture back then.
Um. I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
No, that shed.
Yeah, that's like, that's just.
Yeah, that shed is being relocated, but you don't know where yet, is that correct?
Oh, so it's showing where it is now, that makes.
Yeah, I think it's, it's gonna move. And the proposal's right, we're gonna do that. We swell it.
And, and one thing I know now, Lance, you know, that's um, a retaining wall detail on the plan. CPN, maybe a copy of the variance that was granted? The conditions?
Yeah, we got Lance's there, um. I am always concerned, but. And I don't know if I can even actually get out of that, with the cloud, we have no idea, and any stuff self-loading. We're actively looking. That's kind of a.
Uh, I think you can picture notifications on your settings. No, you can't. I mean, not inside your guys' concern, weekend.
I think the town has the good, but I'm not a hundred percent sure that the applicants have that same. And then I don't, I don't.
Yeah. Over here. Okay, here are the ECB comments, in case you didn't see them, just. Uh, ECB strongly recommends a plane board not approved, the application as proposed. As multiple mature trees will be removed from the lakeside property. I don't, this, lakeside property, so probably. This will have a negative effect on the scene view, chair overlay, erosion, and small water drainage. Uh, ECB recommends a landscape plan be submitted for you, ECB suggests a plan, shoreless trees. Uh, play the look at the landscape plan. ECB recommends that the construction property should be crossing the tree roots. So finally, and most importantly, the ECB recommends a shoreline guideline statement, which I didn't see. Anywhere in the application, which is a firm requirement of uh. Of a site plan in the RLD. So I think uh. We got some issues remaining with this application. Just seeing if there's anything else other than things I want to. Just finding some, like, elevation permit. Uh, is board have any other issues? Other than. What the ECB had, and I think we're reflecting those to be the problem, so I think, John, we're looking at a. We need a shoreline guideline statement, we need a landscape plan. Uh, we need some, some sort of confirmation, what's gonna happen to those trees to the north of the existing house. Not just a matter of a baby safe. Uh, either they will or they won't, if they won't, uh, all the more reason to have a uh. Uh, aggressive landscape plan. Uh, is that, is that tree on the lakeside, is that the poplar tree? Or is that the poplar tree down on the lakeside, uh, you were saying?
There's a couple trees down there, don't show up on the plan.
Yeah, we didn't shoot the trees on, on the.
Okay, well.
Hey, I think that's where the plan is sufficient, so we get some work to do, uh, board have any other? Yeah. Like all the shade. Anything else, what passo to uh, the applicant?
Nothing going, working on the lakeside, right?
No. It can be, um, the boss will just make those conditions that the. We got to see it on point, at least I wanna see it.
And we don't normally.
Okay, so uh, I guess we're gonna, uh, we can certainly handle this on the twelfth. Uh, somebody wanna give me a motion to continue to December twelfth?
I'll make that.
With the provision that the applicant uh, provides the uh, site plan, shoreline guidelines. Any other amendments to the plan have to be done, I will talk about what's gonna happen with that driveway cover, this is gonna be downed, this is. Placed. Um, and if. Any of Lance's. MRB's concern can be addressed in a revised plan, you might as well show that same time, so you got those covered and. My goal would be to get it in by Friday, right? Is that?
Yeah.
Friday, so whatever I do by Friday, with the priority being. Responses to the shoreline development guideline, probably in the letter format, explaining how you're compliant. And then whatever additional improvement you can make on the plan to reflect either the existing landscaping that's gonna remain. Or proposed landscaping that you're gonna provide or a combination thereof.
Okay, do I have a motion to continue or did I?
More.
Yeah, I'll second.
Yep, uh, let me get a second. Do we need elevations with the new, the rebuild's gonna look like?
Uh, that's good. I I I I was looking for elevations. Do they have a design of the house yet?
Oh.
Um.
I think they do, yeah.
Okay, if they do, submit the elevations. For the home.
They always ask about color, right? Signing, signing color, what you plan to do.
The roof.
Sometimes having the elevation view helps us determine what the landscaping, the compliance with shoreline guidelines is. That'll tell us what the house is gonna look like. So you know. The kind of features we need landscaping wise. Uh, thanks, uh, so I have a motion and a second. Okay, to continue to the twelfth, all favor.
Bye.
Okay. Let's move on to other. Minutes. Uh, minutes from the fourteenth. Any additions, corrections? About. Beyond what was uh submitted by the region. If not.
Move to the minutes November fourteenth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second, all favor. Okay, we have uh some money to give out tonight.
Really talking to them.
Coming down.
I'll get him on the way back.
Count to ten.
Yeah, who's the first one?
Yeah, I have the older thing. Which one's first, Rock?
Thank you. Jean, Clement, Rock, Oak.
Think Clement, right?
Clement's new.
Clement, okay. Thank you, I see it. Uh, okay, we have a request from Mr. Clement. There's the forty oh two Rock Oak Hill. He built a new house up there on the. On the block, um. He's asking for his erosion seven issue for money back, the amount of twelve hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion. Yeah, in twenty three, there are twenty three in return of the twelve hundred dollar salary.
Yeah, motion second please.
I will second.
Motion second, all favor.
I.
Okay, moving on to Mr. Letterman.
I can make some motions. Um, to the share the release of twenty three zero three five for Mr. Letterman in the amount of thirty nine hundred. Thank you.
Okay, I get a motions. Second.
I think Mark, Mark.
Yeah, Mark seconded.
Okay, one second. Okay, all favor.
I.
Okay. So the uh twelve. Uh, are you ready to meet you? Any better? Uh, we've got the indoor sports building over on uh Route twenty two. Uh, we've got the close in subdivision. Uh, that's the one. Which one? That's on. Uh, yeah, I it's. I usually have a person. Are we ready to move on, Captain? Captain, uh, we haven't seen any site plans.
Um, so the zoning board. Uh, continued the Kepner, Kepner Road, uh, in Form Based Code. This is the one we're talking about. Uh, the zoning board adjourned or continued the public hearing in order to get a little feedback. Uh, from Sarah. Uh, on. Sort of how. Uh, variances should be. Uh, handled in the Form Based Code District. Um, it's their first major variance request that they heard. They wanna get it right. I think they all recognize that the whole intent of the Form Based Code is a. You know, a design consistency that you can't get if you're issuing variances, but at the same time, there's a lot of preexisting nonconformities. And I think they'd like to hear from Sarah, maybe a little bit more from me. And I was even thinking, Sarah, maybe, and I wanted to ask this board if. Uh, you would find it useful if we brought Bergman in for an hour to talk to the zoning board. About it. Uh, that's the consultant that assisted the town with. Um, the creating the Form Based Code. I don't know how much Form Based Code. Knowledge. I mean, I know some of you, I think, were on the committee. Some of you weren't. Um, would that be useful? I think the site plan. Review elements for Form Based Code are. Not as. Onerous as deciding whether or not to grant a variance, uh, or as or not onerous, but as. Complex a thought process. I think the site plan is a lot like any other site plan review, but I don't know that. Um, and I wanted to see if that would be useful. As an absolute need, or as maybe sometime down the line, you guys said would like to get a little more training in Form Based Code. Yes, or yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi.
Um, my thought is that it's a different training for the zoning board and for this board. Um, and I'd like to get the zoning board there there's sooner rather than later, and obviously this quarter can end, but. I don't think it's as applicable to you guys. Sarah, does that make sense?
Yes, I did already reach out to Bergman um to ask them about that, cause I was talking with Doug about it today. Um, I agree, you know. I I think it's possible, and we did speak to the applicant about this, that they could. They could make more effort to meet code um than they have. Um, and. I understand the zoning board is concerned, and I agree, you know, that these, this is one of the first. Um, one of the first applications we've gotten. We really haven't had that many come through. That are proposing construction and to ask for so many variances right away. I mean, yeah, it goes against the intent of Form Based Code, so. Um, I have not heard back from Bergman yet. Um, I re- I reached out to Kimberly Baptiste. She was one of the main. Um, consultants on the project when we created the Form Based Code. Um, I think that all of the boards would do well to participate in a training with them. Um, I mean, yes, especially the zoning board, but I think. Um, the planning board and the town board also would.
Yeah.
From sometime as well as town staff, because most of the people in this office um are seeing the Form Based Code. You know, for the first time now, they weren't involved before. Um, and I wasn't involved in any of the processes after the code was adopted until now, so I mean. I think it would be good for all of us.
So should, should we and could we be asking for something a little bit different? Uh, I spent quite a bit of time on. Trying to learn more about this as it started to roll out. And what I'm noticing is that we're getting common requests for variance with things like uh. They see the uh, the visibility through the building, for example. Um, should we be asking them to look at what we've created and say, geez, this is. This is out of the norm, and this is what everybody's gonna ask you for, so that we can eliminate the need for potential variances. I mean, that would be.
Asking the applicants to look at that.
Nope, asking, asking our consultants.
Well.
Take a look at again and say of our standards.
Oh, I got this one, Sarah.
Okay, cause I got an answer too.
So. This is what the applicants proposing. But now that has zero transparency, maybe two percent transparency. Now, that's all well and good, cause it's a garage. They said, you know, there's no transparency in garage, but. You can have glass doors, and then you don't need to ask for variance, sure, and. You know, does that need to intend more? Yes.
Hmm.
Um. Maybe you're right. Maybe it's too much transparency. Maybe it's not enough transparency. I don't know. Um. But the whole. Uh. Point of the Form Based Code is its design consistency.
Yes.
And, you know, I got a uh. Conversation with our town manager today, and I understand Form Based Code and its. Design consistency, and they had public input and the town board and the ordinance committee and and CIC and. Town staff worked hard to figure out what. The vision was, and the town board approved it, and so this is what we want here.
I get it, but everyone we've looked at so far, they've asked for variance and transparency, everyone.
I will say that.
Because it's easier to do it that way. Uh, if I may, I'd like to follow up on what Chris has said. Um, i- in addition to everything he said, and kind of following up on the last statement you made. Um, don't forget, and for some of you, you just didn't know, cause you weren't here, but there were lengthy meetings. Um, there were architects involved in this, engineers, um, Bergman Associates had. A lot of input um on their end from staff. These weren't just arbitrary. I mean, these were picked with a lot of thought. And process into it. I I believe applicants are going to ask for variances wherever they can, because it's easier to design something. Um, in a traditional sense, without having to meet this code. And I do hear what you're saying, Mark, um, a lot.
I mean, don't, don't.
People are saying it's more expensive to do it that way, but again, I, you know. There was a lot of thought process put into this um with the requirements, the way they are now. Um, at the time, and it wasn't. It wasn't just picked out of the blue. You know, we were.
Okay, so that that's awesome, because I'm not suggesting that we should change it. Sounds like the training needs then go to the ZVA, because I get a little bit tired of having to approve plans that the ZVA issues variances on all the time.
I don't think they have issued a transparent.
They not, um, yeah, but in general.
You're saying not for like Form Based Code, but for like those lakefront properties, those.
The ZVA proves almost everything that comes before it these days.
I will say that the Form Based Code applications. Uh, that I believe that we have received, and 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 based on what it was designed to, is mostly commercial mixed-use opportunities, and therefore. You want transparency, you want big glass, you want open areas. The ones that we've been getting have been mixed-use leaning towards residential. And so the argument that they've been playing is that they can't, we can't have all this glass for residential, like. Structurally, it doesn't work. We can't put a wall where we want, privacy issues, et cetera. We've heard it all. I don't know that.
But that, that's why I would suggest having them take a look at it, because Form Based Code by design isn't supposed to matter what goes on inside.
Right.
So if it wasn't, if we think that's gonna be residential, then that was planned improperly. Again, my goal is to not say anything is right or wrong. My goal is to have a guideline that we stick to, that we not constantly have to deal with very.
Right.
But I think, so, I mean. There are situations, the reason I want ZVA's training to be a little different than yours is. There are situations when variances are appropriate. In all zone, otherwise you wouldn't have.
In times of hardship, huh?
Nope, that's for use variants, but area variance, you can't zone for every possible eventual. You just.
But when we're starting something.
Which is why you have a quasi judicial uh entity that can weigh the facts and the situations. It's okay, we'll let it slide. We'll let this, that's New York State law says you have to, if you have zoning codes, you have to have a zoning board. The relief now. Now, I can't think of, I I couldn't come up with examples. A week ago to give the zoning board of when it would be appropriate to give. Variants, because what you have right there is almost entirely preexisting non-conform uses. None of them comply.
Comply, sure.
Some of them might never be able to comply.
Right.
You know, there's a, there's a planning solution to that, and I I just couldn't come up with examples. Uh, and I think between Sarah, me, and Bergman, they'll. We'll get in the zoning board to a place where they know what what should be granted and what, and how to analyze. But I'll tell you this, they they were all hesitant to grant these. That's why we wanted to. We need more information, so. There wasn't their discussions, the fact that they wanted to do a car dealership also, and then all our parking in the back and building to the front. And that was not talked about for me. I didn't hear that conversation at the zoning board. Um, but at that point, I may have been busy looking at this. Um. In a stunned silence. Um, yeah, that's, you know, car dealerships want their cars out front, absolutely. You know, but does the zoning code allow that? Uh, does the zoning code encourage that? Or prohibit that? Cause here, our zoning code prohibits that. Now, that makes the Honda dealership and Nissan dealership. Way out of compliance, but. If they wanna tear down and rebuild their facility, they're gonna have to be brought into compliance. Um, and there's a lot of municipalities that have Form Based Codes where the cars are in the back. And does that catch the eye as much? No. But people still sell cars in those municipalities.
Probably solves transparency issue.
Solid word wall. Actually, I was thinking about it. Just do a glass building right up against the.
Yeah. Fill it with cars.
Cars, cars. Cars will never get rust.
Yeah.
Right, Sarah, that's how Form Based Code is supposed to work, just glass buildings with. With your retail uh wares laid out for everybody to see. But so. Yeah, I'm gonna, I mean, I guess Sarah. You can work it out with Bergman, but I think the zoning board needs to hear pretty darn quick. And the planning board, it's. Your role is different, and you guys get it.
Were the plans then continued to in January?
No, December, right? December, yes.
Okay, so the ZVA.
Yes.
You know, we don't have a second meeting in December.
I don't think, I don't know that we continue either one to any, I think that we just, I just go.
Uh, we okay.
Preliminary approval.
We did towards or the sub.
Based on the fact that they had to go get variances.
They would not get primal subdivision until we get the site file.
Right.
And the site plan required the variances. So we were.
I don't think either one of them were actually.
Down the hecking earth.
I. I think one of them was sketch. I don't think you guys did anything with it, right?
Right.
Uh, no, we looked at the sketch. We gave them comments.
No, I mean, like, I don't, there was no approvals granted, right?
Oh, no, well, there was a subdivision, preliminary subdivision.
Oh, yeah.
Really? Yeah, we created a lot so that they could get their variances based on.
Based on them.
Yeah, otherwise, where would, where would the variances be based on?
Yeah.
But we gave a preliminary with understanding that it would just get their foot in the door, and then they would go through the process. Of which that was step one of a multi-step process. Which sounds like it stopped, so. But my point is, I had them shown for your next meeting. I don't think there's actually an application or a continuation. Or any reason why they have to be shown.
Or just to us the next. CBA will not discuss them until I go.
Yeah, it's somewhere around the end. At which point. January.
Maybe next year.
Okay, uh, Sarah, do you have anything for the plane board? Thank you for sitting in tonight.
Oh, yeah, happy to be here.
Okay.
Happy to be here, Sarah, really? Don't you have COVID?
Well, I'm not that sick. I just didn't wanna be down there with a mask.
Thank you.
Thank you. But still happy to be here, Sarah. That's a team player.
Shall we?
Alrighty, anybody else have anything for the good of the board? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty this evening.
I'll second.
Vision second, all favor.
Bye.